It would be this Tuesday before.
Tuesday before?
The sixteenth?
Sure.
Or the twenty-third?
No, that's too close to the question.
So we should talk about it in the meeting.
Okay.
I can do.
You can, okay.
I can actually do late night back there. I can do the sixteen, two and the twenty-third.
Oh, okay.
It's already in my calendar because I put all the two, the last Tuesdays in.
Right, you put in all the dates, right?
But whatever you get from just.
Yeah, whatever the board, I mean, I'm here, you know. I'm always available. It's, we're, whatever you decide in the meeting. Now is, okay, good.
Is this phone coming?
Phones, silence your phones because we are live, just to tell you. Just to let everybody know we're on YouTube.
I know, I did shut the phone out. I haven't put it in my pocket, too.
He is here.
Look at this.
Early, too. Do you want to, us to move down one? Yeah, we'll move down one.
No, I'm good, I'll sit there.
No, you sit with the boys.
I'll sit, I'll sit by you.
Oh, okay.
You like boy, girl, boy, girl.
Yeah, it's good, I think it's good.
Good for you.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
All right, how's everybody tonight?
Good.
We're all right, we're already starting trouble as much as we can.
Do you have your, I'm just asking you before you come up because I was trying, do you have your plans with me?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I do, it's okay.
I have the, I have the survey, but I don't have.
No, no, I have them, it's okay. I have it. But it's my original, so.
How are you?
Good, you?
Good, yeah.
All right.
That's fine, it'll kill me, but that's all right. Everybody.
Yeah.
No, I didn't absolutely.
Let me know, I sent somebody out.
I've seen how many, thousand years and it truly just.
Yeah, she's security.
Can you move the floor?
I know, right?
Yeah.
Keeps the head warm, too.
I know, those have to do. I have been in those, but it doesn't say security.
He must be on the email. No, I didn't. I haven't seen him in like five years. Oh, now that's hard to say.
What?
I don't think he would know who Wayne is.
No. She was on the board, which I never met him.
Say, where are you?
Where?
Yeah, I thought that was. Wayne has applied maybe to this invitation. He's, he must still be on the list.
Yes.
Wayne must still be on the email list.
No.
Well, he, he applied, he responded as maybe to the invitation today.
He did? Let me see. No.
Yeah.
I didn't get his response today. Let me see. Oh, oh, here. Let me see. I have to go back and look.
I haven't seen him in like five years.
Yeah, just make sure you sign in. And silence your phones.
Thanks for reminding me.
Yes. Did you just remind him?
My wife, my wife called me last time. I turned my phone off and not my watch. She called. It's like that. I'm gonna shave the right side. No shade, no pen.
Yes. That's good.
The typo, it says twenty-two house street.
What?
On the, uh.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Says twenty-two half, it should be twenty-four. I don't know, if the big one, then maybe they fixed it on the. I'm looking at the.
Oh, no, it says twenty-four.
Okay. But then they, okay, then they, then they just be referring to the email.
Do you have that? Do you have? Where's that left?
It's not.
So that's my original.
No. Did, Noah?
How's that? Then, then we can see it on the camera.
Factory.
Oh, you see it on the camera?
Your house, yeah.
Let's see, question.
Like, what are they all looking at?
All right, it's rock and roll time, seven o'clock.
Yeah, could see it.
Hi, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock. And I'd like to call the Village of Warwick, New York, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Tell order, and we start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, John Greeney.
Here.
Wes Burley.
Present.
John Credow.
Here.
Margaret Polatafsky.
Here.
Nikki Delio.
Here.
And Will Frank.
Here.
Um, can I have a motion to accept the minutes from October twenty-eighth meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, there you go, thank you for the wake-up call. Okay. Uh, and this evening, our first thing is Twenty-four House Street. For a shed. Notices hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Warwick, New York on Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M. Or as soon thereafter as can be heard on said date. The public hearing will take place at the Village Hall located seventy-seven Main Street, Warwick, New York. Uh, the public hearing will cover the application for David Jones and Cecily Jones as applicants for property owners for an area variance from one four five dash four one and one four five dash five O of the Village zoning code. The code that allows for the installation of a ten-by-twenty-four prefabricated shed on the property. The proposed additions would reduce the side set back from ten feet to three feet, requiring a variance of seven feet, and reduce the side yard setback from ten feet to three feet requiring a variance of seven feet. The property is located in the residential district. The applicant's property is located at Twenty-four House Street, Warwick, New York, lot SBL two-ten dash fourteen dash thirteen. The Zoning Board of Appeals will consider all verbal and all written statements from all persons interested in the proposed variance at the above time and place. The Zoning Board of Appeals will also consider such further relief as it finds necessary. Copies of the application, environmental assessment form, plans, and any other information submitted in support of it are available for review during normal business hours at planning and zoning Village of Warwick, New York. Um, come on up and talk to us.
Sure. So this is the site plan that Kirsten laid out. Um, so there's, there's actually three variances. So there's the, there's the setback on the side and the back wall, but also the distance between the existing structure and this, which I believe is supposed to be fifteen feet minimum, and this is fourteen-seven.
Okay, just for the record, you're Mr. Jones?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So we have it for the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Uh, so essentially, I'd just like to utilize this space much more efficiently. It's currently gross neander utilized. It has a very small, uh, original, uh, non-conforming shed and a small plastic shed that I'd like to remove all of that and replace with this new shed. It has currently a wooden fence that goes all the way around the property. Um, I'll remove the section on this side and across here in order to do the work necessary to bring in the shed from outside. I will definitely replace this piece. I am uncertain yet whether I'll replace that all or not. Um, I may, I may.
Okay. What does it depend on?
Uh, really, I'm gonna talk to my neighbor, John, and see what he thinks. Because it would take it, I would have to take that fence and let it, like, run it right down the property line. He already has a, a metal fence there, so I'm not really concerned about it. Um, and, you know, if he would like to have it up there so that visibly he has no concerns with it. Because really, it's his property right there that would be the only thing kind of affected by it. Uh, that, and, and also the, the oak tree that's right here. I wanna make certain I don't disturb any of the roots on this tree because this tree is wonderful. So I may not be able to put that whole thing back because if I have to dig into areas that are gonna affect that tree, I don't wanna do that.
Are you gonna, will it affect the tree in any way if you take the fence out?
No.
I'm sorry, did, did you get all the appropriate mailing?
Yes.
Information and proof of mail?
Yes.
Okay, so we just want that in the minutes as well.
Thank you.
I have no question.
I don't have any questions.
Me neither.
Yeah.
Let's write through it. And, uh, well, anybody?
Well, wait a minute, we have to make a motion to open the public hearing. So who wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is open.
Anybody?
Okay, before we do that, has, has this, was this before the planning board at all or no?
This will have to go to the planning board after here.
Right, so it hasn't, it hasn't gone yet?
He, he has been there, he's been to the planning board, and they directed him to the zoning board.
Okay, was there a determination this was type two?
There was, yes, I'm sure.
Because obviously, we can't. If there was any other determination than type two, we wouldn't be able to have come this until presumably the planning. If there is, if it is subject to seeker, which I don't think it is, the planning board would normally be lead agency. Just wanna make sure that there was a type-two determination someplace.
Uh, the attorney helmet memo does not reference that, so I have to read through the minutes to see. So you'll have to, we'll have to, you'll have to wait.
Right.
Are we all staring at me?
No. At the board.
I'm not looking at the screen, Matt, I can't roll.
Not at your beautiful face.
We're only thinking about you.
Okay, okay. I don't, I don't remember what date you came to the.
June.
It was June, thank you, because, sorry, I have a lot of projects. You came June tenth?
Sounds right.
Here we go.
I mean, I think it's type two.
You said you have a boat?
Yes, I'm a sailor.
What kind?
Uh, it's not one that.
In the meantime, Kristen, you can certainly ask, while you're looking at that, you can ask if anybody from the public has any comment.
This application is a type-two act under seeker, which will not require further environmental review.
Perfect.
There we go.
That's what I thought.
Do, 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 sorry.
I'm a sailor, awesome.
If you want me to write these things down going forward for the applications, for the projects, I will.
Yeah.
So you'll know right away.
So if the board wants to act that evening, you know.
Okay.
On something.
Right.
All right.
Anybody in the audience? Going once, going twice, okay, no.
Sold.
No.
So are we closing the public hearing?
Yes. I'm, we're through the.
Make a motion to close.
I make a motion to close.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Um, will this create an undesirable change or detriment?
That's not you.
Stay there or you're not supposed to stare, whatever.
You stay and listen.
Will this variance cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood's character to be a detriment of nearby properties?
No.
No.
No. My feeling. Okay, feasible alternatives? Can the applicant achieve this desired benefit through add method that does not require a variance?
No.
No.
No. It's a small line. Substantially, how substantial is the requested variance?
Not.
A lot.
A lot.
If it's going from ten to three feet, mathematically, that's a lot. Adverse physical or environmental impact? Will variance have an adverse effect on physical environment and conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
None.
No. And lastly, self-created hardship? Was the difficulty that necessitates, necessitates the variance self-created by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Having gone through the criteria, the board now can balance the, because this is an area variance, you can consider these five factors and balance them out and make your determination whether the board wishes to grant these three variances that are being sought by the applicant.
I'm ready.
So someone can now make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
To?
Grant the variance.
The, grant the three variances sought by the applicant?
Yep. I'll second.
There you go. Any discussion?
I third.
Well, just, right now, you just need a motion and a second, which you have. Is there any further discussion by the board?
No.
Okay.
We'll call the roll.
Call the roll. All in favor, say aye or nay.
First, aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so you'll, um.
I'll prepare, the motion carries. Variances are granted, and I'll prepare the appropriate resolution.
Okay.
You're good. You, once you. Which is yours. Once you have the board's resolution, you'll be able to return to the planning board. Okay. And proceed.
Do you want me to make a mo, sometimes we, um, make a motion for you to draw up the resolution. Do you want a separate resolution for that?
Well, you can make a separate motion for that.
You might as well, can you make a rec, can you please make a motion?
Right, to direct the attorney counsel for the zoning board to prepare the appropriate resolution consistent with the vote that was taken this evening.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Somebody?
Aye, all in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll prepare the resolution, the chairman will sign it, and then you, that'll be delivered to the clerk, and you'll be able to go back to the planning board.
Okay, and so, once I get the planning board permission, if, unless I don't, I, where's that? How does, how does that work?
Okay, so this is what's going to happen.
Go ahead, Kristen.
You have to, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you want me to just take the?
Go for it.
So what's going to happen is, the attorney's going to draw up the resolution, okay? The decision for your variances. Then I have to get the chair to sign it. And then what you're going to do is, that resolution has to be attached to the plans, and then you have to resubmit that to the planning board.
Gotcha.
By the next invite date.
Right.
So you're relying upon, you know, there's a lot.
Right, okay.
So we'll try and get that done as soon as possible. So you can come to the planning board the next.
So will there be one in December?
January, you would, you won't have enough time for December because my invite date was today for the planning board meeting.
Okay.
What was the, the other variance, was how many?
The feet away from the building, it's supposed to be a minimum of fifteen. Where's that, fourteen-seven?
Half foot.
Yeah, half, half a foot is, uh.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Yep, you too. Thank you.
All right, then, the next on our agenda is Twenty-three Wheeler. Two-story addition. Come on up and talk to us.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi. Hello again.
You didn't bring your first word. Well, I have.
Oh.
I, no, I'm supposed to bring my.
I got this one, too.
So I think last time we were here, the, it was, uh, the question was the lot was emerged, the two lots that we had on the property. And now they're merged. So I think we, we're just trying to do the next step.
Is this the one where we had Ross's letter?
Okay, so what's supposed to happen tonight is those two lots were merged together. They now have one SBL as requested. So what's to happen tonight is, they would like to have, move forward with this and have a public hearing on if you're going to let them do the addition. So that's what they're waiting for, for the next meeting. That's what the deal is.
Okay, so we've got side setback, total set, total side setback, side yard, and distance between the principal building and accessory structure. Just kind of, just a little bit of traffic. You're doing the addition, is what you wanna do? It's a two-story addition?
Mm-hmm.
Want to just explain it again to the board so everybody remembers what you're doing?
Yeah, so, uh, we are adding, so the, the reason behind this is because our, um, my mother is now living with us, and she has cognitive issues. Let's just say, uh, she has dementia. And so, we need more space, we need a, a room for her. And, um, and so, we are building to the side and to the back in order to alleviate some of our, our crampiness and stress. And, um, so she can have her own space. And also, we can better make the space to watch her a little bit better. Um, so that's what we're doing, in simple terms.
The variances are on the side yard and between the addition and the new, and the existing garage.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a shed.
Oh, so, I don't, is it the garage? So I think the.
The shed.
Yeah, yeah, it's a shed. The garage, I think, is fine, uh, I believe. It's the shed.
Can't see that from.
Yeah, sorry. It's the shed and the side.
That's the concrete block building is the, is the shed.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Read the, it's tough to read the, uh, there's a bigger part in there.
Yeah.
And just, why don't you just go through which variances you're gonna need, and the amounts of variances?
Well, they don't.
Oh, yeah, I, I'll read it a few.
I don't, I don't.
I don't know if the exact points.
Who prepared this for me?
Uh, the garage.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Where are we at, John? We have, uh.
We, you're gonna.
You want me to read through all of this?
No, no, no.
Just this, the, uh, setback for the, for the side and the back.
Side yard, yeah.
Yes, side yard, John, where am I looking? All right, side, uh, you're supposed to have twenty. This is for seventeen point seven-three feet. And then, uh, what was our total side set?
This, this is the, this is.
Oh, this is, here we go, side, supposed to have ten and going to two-point-two-five.
Existing is two-point-two-five and proposed is five-point-oh-eight.
So it's gaining.
So these are the variances here.
Okay, so here's our variance, so, on the right. Um, so we have for a total side setback, we need a variance of five feet. And then.
A total side setback of thirty-one point seven-eight.
Thirty-one point seven-eight. And.
A side yard of five-point-oh-eight, right, right here.
Yep.
Yeah, I can't see that, though.
Oh.
Uh, but, so, allowed is forty-one-nine, current is forty-four-two. With this, we're going to thirty-one-seven. So we're going from forty-one to thirty-one-seven-eight. And this one, we're going from twenty to five. So we've got a large, all right, so what we have is a large variance for the side setback from twenty to five feet. And the total side setback, um, supposed to have forty-one-nine. Currently, he has forty-four-two, so he has more, but it's gonna go down to thirty-one-seven-eight. So basically, we're going from forty-one-nine to thirty-one-seven-eight, so it's, that's twenty-five percent. And, uh, side yard is ten, and we're going to, is what we're supposed to have. Currently, he has two-point-two-five, and we're going to proposing to go to five. So it's really, that's improving. So we're going from ten feet to five feet.
Required us to.
Right, required us to, and we're going to five. That goes back to you.
There's top pieces. Okay. Again, do we know the seeker status? I mean, tonight's not a public hearing, so we don't absolutely need to know, we can.
I can go back in the planning board minutes.
This board, if, if the board is.
Uh, John was just saying probably increased because we merged the two lots. And the one, so that's why that changed. All right, um, so, now, what is procedure for this now? To give them guidance?
You just have schedule public hearing.
That's exactly right. So that's what should be happening.
And now that you have all this updated information.
What?
Now that you have the updated information.
Exactly, yes, because they merged their lots, and now they have one SBL, then you can now set the public hearing for the variances that are required.
Okay. So when do we wanna do that?
Okay, so, uh, the meeting in December. So, do you want to set it for December? I believe we said six, you can't come, most of you can't come, right? On the twenty-third? You had said that at the last meeting. How many people can come on the twenty-third?
I can.
I can.
I guess I'll come.
Oh, you can come?
I'm a question booker, though.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's two days before Christmas.
It's two days before Christmas.
So we're good, then, fine, we'll keep the, do you want to keep, then we can keep the meeting, not that?
The twenty-third.
Good, then. That's better for me.
All right.
To keep it the regular date.
Okay.
So if it's great for you.
We'll do it.
Those lovely volunteers. Lovely volunteers, thank you.
We'll do it.
We'll do it.
Somebody make. Can you miss the, December twenty-third?
Okay, it'll be a week after.
I may want to bring, it may be good, it may be tough on the twenty-third.
I'm not going to do anything tonight, or the twenty-third, that is not a way to do it.
Doesn't have to.
Okay.
But just to explain the variance is what we, for the record. So does someone want to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for the variance needed for twenty-three Wheeler Avenue on December twenty-third at seven P.M.?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so do we have to do anything? Yes. Before that?
Yep.
What do they have to do?
The mailings.
Oh.
The mailings, the mailings to the neighbors.
I'll get you the public hearing notice.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll give you all of the mailings, and by email, and I'll show you everything that you have to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Basically, you got to send certified mail notice of the public hearing around to your neighbors within, what is it, around here, two hundred, five hundred feet?
Three hundred.
Three hundred feet? Yeah, so Kristen's going to give you the information and the list of properties that you have to send a certified notice, certified mail notice of the public hearing for the twenty-third. And then you'll bring those mailing receipts to the office here before the public hearing. Usually have them bring it before, Kristen?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so she'll, she'll explain all that to you.
Okay. Okay.
I'll prepare the public hearing notice.
Yeah, and then I'll publish it in the paper, and then as soon as I give it to you, then mail everything out as soon as possible.
Yes. Okay.
Yes, okay, good, awesome.
Thank you.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
All right, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Enjoy the holiday. Have a good night.
Take care.
Bye, and then I'll look at Thursday for action.
All right, come on up here, Penn Cottage.
Hi, is Mary Freely your mother? You look just like her. I worked with her.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to say this for the record, that the previous project is a type-two action under seeker, okay?
So we'll make a note of that, so if the board wants to act on the twenty-third, up or down on granting those variances, you'll be able to do that.
Okay.
The, the reason I asked that question is because normally, if it's a larger or substantial project, the planning board gives the, if it's a, if it's an action subject to seeker, the planning board is normally the lead agency, and if they haven't made a seeker determination, negative deck, positive deck, then the ZBA can make the final decision until the planning board does their thing. But when it's a type-two, no more seeker is, no more seeker review is required, and off we go. Okay. Penn Cottage.
Penn Cottage.
Where we get?
So this is proposed two-lot subdivision. Currently, there's a one.
I'm sorry.
So there's currently a one-four bedroom house on the lot, and is looking to subdivide and potentially build another house on the proposed lot. So he proposes to split them right down the middle, and create two zero point one four four acre blocks. So they're both relatively small. Pretty much no difference in any other lot within the neighborhood.
Okay, we, I had a question.
Yep.
I'm looking at engineering and surveying properties letter for the day of date. At the bottom here, says this parcel was previously subdivided into two tax parcels in eighty-nine.
That's Noel Thompson. Noel Thompson property. The old, the original owner was Briobos, and he created that property.
Right, but was your property ever subdivided?
No.
I know what he's saying, he's saying that his property.
Previous to my purchasing it.
Previous to his purchasing it, that property over here was part of this lot, and then this and that were subdivided, that's what that's saying.
Subdivided that there. I get thirteen point one, thirteen point one two, thirteen point two.
Okay.
All right, so that answers that question.
So what are the dimensions of the variances, the size of the variances that applicant is looking for here?
This is quite a bit. Okay, so there's.
The board needs to know.
So there's a lot area variance.
This is the right one.
Required is twenty thousand, he'll be making two lots that are just about six thousand two hundred and eighty-seven square feet.
Okay, so let's just clarify then, if it's required at twenty, and it's currently twelve, it's already undersized. I'm just a little, why is it that when I read the intro paragraph here, why is it saying two-lot minor subdivision?
Because it's only two lots.
But why is the word minor?
Because it's the side, it's only two lots.
It's only two lots.
Okay.
That's why it's considered minor. It's not saying the variances aren't substantial, it's saying that it's a two-lot minor. Like a major subdivision is more lots.
Okay.
Trying to do a twelve.
Includes a roadway.
Yeah, trying to build twelve houses in twelve lots, you know, that's a major.
Okay. So, so currently, it would be twenty thousand, should be twenty, and you're at twelve?
Yes, presently.
Presently.
And so you want to go.
Twelve five. So he wants to, to six thousand two hundred and eighty-seven for each. So there will be a lot width variance, the required is a hundred, you'll be going down to just about seventy-three for each of the lots. You know, side yard setbacks, there's going to be required, lot depth will be required, the floor area ratio will be, will be required for the proposed lot two. And I think there's.
Can you see?
Yeah, I'm just.
There's a handful.
The house is currently on which lot?
It will be on proposed lot two.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. I gotta start bringing the floor. Yeah, take this, no, it's all right.
So the variance for the, the original would only be one variance because the original is already existing. So we just looking at the thirty-foot side setback, this one, correct?
Go ahead. Yeah, so the proposed lot two, because he's making a new lot line.
Right.
It would create, lot width would be an issue, because he's going from a hundred and forty-six feet down to seventy-three, seventy, yeah, seventy-two point four five for his. Since he's making it a smaller lot, the floor area ratio would go from zero point one four up to zero point two nine, just because it is a smaller lot.
The idea is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and then again, the side yard setbacks, since his lot is getting smaller, he would, he would require a side yard setback for his existing house also.
It would need an area also, wouldn't it?
Yes, yeah, both lots would need area variances.
The idea is to sell this lot off?
Yes.
But but, but according to our code, he has to get the variances for the second lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so even though he's going to sell it off, you sell the variances with your approval, that's, that's the situation.
So, yeah, during a subdivision, he has to get the variances before the, before the planning board would grant the subdivision.
Exactly, so he has to know when you go to sell your lot, that they are, that's, they're buying your.
Yeah. Right, if this board doesn't grant the variances, then there's no subdivision, basically.
Yeah.
Questions? I mean, right now, the, the next step would be to set a public hearing, but do you have any questions while these folks are here?
Is it too early to ask, is this something that the?
You're Brian, right?
Yes, yeah, sorry, is this something that the ZBA would would grant if, if, if neighbors came out, you know, kind of, kind of encouraging it, well, not maybe encouraging it, but, but, but in favor of it?
That's not a question they're going to answer.
Okay.
That's something that they'll decide.
Okay.
When, when circumstances dictate, that's not something that they answer.
Okay.
Goes to public hearing, then the board, of course, will consider everything, whether it's input from the public, input from the village's professionals, engineers, and things like that, and then they'll weigh the factors. Because you all know the, the five factors they have to consider, but these are all area variances, so you have to consider, you know, if the area variances are substantial, if the hardship is self-created, whether it's going to alter the character of the neighborhood, if there's any other way you could accomplish the goals, you know, the usual factors. But that's something, after the public hearing, that the board will wind up considering. They don't answer whether they're inclined to grant the variance.
No.
We don't do that.
How many variances are they requesting for the second lot, so the public can know? Right, right here, now can you say how many variances are requested for the first lot and the second lot, so the public knows?
So here, yeah, for proposed lot one, there's one, two, three, four, five, six. Proposed lot two with the existing house, one, two, three, four, five, six also.
The total of twelve variances.
Yes.
Very substantial, yeah. Whoop, you just.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I noticed, um, there's a well on that, on one of the, on that property currently? Is it? So it's going to be on?
No, it's on the old, it's on the, it's closer to the existing.
Oh, okay, so I wouldn't, all right. Just want to know if it.
It's slab covered.
Is it filled in? It's not filled in?
I've never lifted the slab, actually, it's quite, it's quite heavy.
Well, it's on the, it's on the, it's where the existing property, his existing houses anyway, all right.
And another, something that came to my attention was this fence line, Noel Thompson's fence line, I've already spoken with him about the eventuality, if this goes forward, he needs to move his fence because it is encroaching onto, right here.
Oh.
That's an existing fence that was put in.
And that's on your, that's on your property right now?
Yes. He's, Noel's aware of it, and.
Oh, yeah.
If this doesn't go forward, then.
Well, it's between you guys, either way.
Yeah, it's between us, and, but if it does go forward, then he's moving his fence.
He's got to deal with it. That's a big questions.
So do we want to move it to next meeting?
Public hearing?
Yep.
All right, so is there a motion to schedule the public hearing for the variances needed in connection with the Ten Cottage Street proposed minor subdivision for December sixteenth?
Twenty-third.
I'm sorry, my apologies, the twenty-third, can you guys be here on the twenty-third?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I believe I can be.
Okay. At seven P.M. or soon thereafter, is the applicant going to be heard?
I will make a motion. So we'll start with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Today, she.
Proposed? All right, so same deal you heard before, Kristen, I'll prepare the public hearing notice.
With all the required variants.
Yeah, I'm going to need like a larger nap, so I can't.
Okay.
I got it. I got it, got it. I'll prepare the public hearing notice. Kristen will give you all the information, down the alleys and all that sort of stuff.
All right, sounds good, thank you. So much for your time.
Thank you, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Yes, a big Thanksgiving to everybody.
And then the addresses, the public hearing notice, and then what you're supposed to do.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call it.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a larger version for, that I can take for twenty-three Wheeler, because I can't read that one either in terms of public hearing notice, I got to take that.
Yep.
Click this one. Actually, if I, I have an electronic.
I have it.
Okay. You have two of them? Solid, this way it'll just be easier to do that.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moving that right away.
I'll second.
Just don't want to get sidetracked.
Second?
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Adjourn, aye. Thank you.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah.
We're no longer live.
And this is her, there's too many for me.